Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, May 18th, 2017. Please rise as Renee Flores, Deputy City Secretary, leads us in the invocation this evening, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Davet Quinones, Lupus Foundation of America Lone Star Chapter Volunteer, Colleen Walked and Lupus, now top fundraiser.
Thank you, please bow your heads and let us pray. So, dear heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for allowing us to be here. Lord, we ask that you continue to be with our city. Lord, as we come together, we ask that you just guide our hearts and lead us. Lord, especially be with our mayor and our city council members, as they will be making the decisions for our city today. Lord, we thank you always for those who govern over us and that protect and keep us safe. Lord, we ask that your angels just encamp around them, such as our police department, our firefighters, Lord, our emergency services as well, and especially with our military, Lord. That your angels just encamp around them and keep them safe, Lord. And, Lord, we love you and we thank you. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the opportunity for public comments. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter may do so. They've signed up to speak prior to the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the council. First up is Mr. J.D. Zepner.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, entities, citizens, and residents of Texas. I'm kind of lost for words for me to be up here. I'm kind of confused in District 2. We've got an election going on. And this is the second time we meet Mr. Mayor as a representative, I guess, of District 2, as he did last time around, if I'm correct. I just don't know about the city, how its government. I've been here for three years. I tell you, we've got one hell of a system here that I'm glad to be a part of. We've got good city. District 1, and you've got the growth of your district, but you still have a little bit of problems, kind of like District 2 has. Ms. Long, thank you for being a citizen, taking the position of council. Perry Cloud, he was a good councilman, and he made good decisions for his district. I wish you'd do the same for yours. Since I ain't going to get into District 2 too much, I would say this. I know the citizens in your district on South 31st Street, they don't want no chicken shack, car wash, or any kind of thing on them vacant lots. They want neighbors to live in their neighborhood, like a neighborhood should be. One thing that came across that I think was real big was that the citizens of your district stood up. And one thing I noticed, they want to park a rail trail through your district. If one thing you could do, ma'am, before you finish your term, however it might take, could you get a bike trail, a hike trail, maybe a train trail on that old Georgetown track? And one more thing I have to say, I read in the paper that the other one named a street at the Little Joe Hernandez. I think that's great, but I'll tell you, right cat a corner on 6th Street, on the south-south corner was a bar, and the Marlin Police Chief was working security there, and he got shot in the face and later died. Right cat a corner from the police. Could we make a memorial for him and all our fallen heroes, police, and fire, in that little plot of land on 6th Street? I've been studying that area quite a bit. Some people know, some of the city entities know, I'm out there doing something. Even the mayor caught me a couple of years ago, taking pictures downtown, photoball my picture, didn't even know until I was reviewing my pictures. So, I'm just saying, we've got a great community here, and I'd like to see it better. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Zepner. And I am so sorry, there's someone who has signed up, and I can't, I'm having trouble with their name. Joseph, or anyone? If you signed up second on the sheet, and if you're still in the room, if you signed up for any sheet. Address, I'm making up, I'm making out an 86, starts with an 86, 04. Anybody? Okay. This is, this is, can you, can you read that? I have horrible handwriting, so. So, I'm just going to go ahead and end the public comment period, but if anybody thinks about it, just, you know, look at me at some point. Item number three, we have some proclamations and special recognitions. First is A, it's put on Purple Day. And if I could ask Ms. Quinones to come back up. The tie today was a happy accident. Absolutely. Yeah, that is great. I don't have any, I don't have the lips, though. Whereas, an estimated 1.5 million Americans suffer from lupus, the chronic inflammatory autoimmune disease that can affect various parts of the body, especially the skin, joints, blood, and kidneys. Whereas lupus can be difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses, and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences. Whereas, the Lupus Foundation of America Lone Star Chapter is part of a national force devoted to solving the cruel mystery of lupus while providing caring support to those who suffer from its brutal impact. Whereas, the chapter rallied the city of Temple community to wear the color purple and to further unify the support for those living with the disease. And whereas, awareness is vital in raising funds for research for those affected by lupus, and it is our responsibility as a community to advocate on behalf and to further encourage educational programs, so everyone affected by lupus can have an improved quality of life. Now therefore I, Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2017, as Put on Purple Day throughout the city of Temple, and urge all citizens to support the cause of raising awareness of lupus so that we can have a world with no lupus. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the City of Temple, Texas, this the 18th day of May, 2017. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, I would.
Would you like to have the?
Yes, I would. Thank you so much.
You have to give it back, though.
Oh, gosh. It's just, it's, we're just so humbled right now. On behalf of nearly 120,000 Texans that are living with lupus, we would like to thank the City of Temple for their continued support and our, to help us raise awareness. A lot of people don't really understand lupus. I, for one, was one of those. I lost my best friend in 2014, and when she told me she was diagnosed with lupus, I always thought, okay, Toni Braxton has lupus, and she looks amazing, so how come you're always tired, you're not doing the things that you used to do? So, I decided to make it my mission to help raise awareness, because I don't want anybody to be ignorant like I was and lose a friend. So, tomorrow, I want each and every one of you to wear purple and to help us to continue to raise awareness. Again, the City of Temple, thank you so much, and we look forward to doing it again.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here. Now we have Public Works Week, and I know we've got several folks in the audience from the Public Works Department, and would you all like to come to the front? Not, not all of you at once. First, if, first, if, on behalf of the council, if we can thank everyone for giving us our Public Works Week shirts, we will wear them with pride, and remember, we have a Public Works Week luncheon next week, so that might be a good time to, to, to wear the shirts at the, at the first time. Whereas, the public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. The health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas, these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, and administrators, who are responsible for building, operating, and maintaining the public work system, systems essential to serve our citizens. Whereas, the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the efficient operation of public works programs, and the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated staff is materially influenced by the people. Whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of the citizens of the City of Temple greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas, this year's theme is "Public Works Connects Us," which showcases that public works provides, maintains, and improves the services that assure a higher quality of life for our community. Now therefore I, Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as Public Works Week throughout the city of Temple, and urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the City of Temple, Texas, this the 18th day of May, 2017. And Ms. Long, can I pass this to you, and would you like to say a few things?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Public Works Department, we keep the water flowing, the streets available for access, the traffic signals, we keep all the city assets on the ground moving. What else do we do? We do administration, we do drainage, pretty much everything that doesn't move is what we do. And we really appreciate this for the community, council, so that we can keep those services available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So, thank you to all of our public works folks, and thank you to the community for supporting us.
Nicole, just, just so everybody knows, how many Public Works employees are there?
We have about 190 employees in Public Works.
That's amazing. Thank you. Thank y'all all for being here. Now I have a proclamation for EMS Week. Happy to have everybody with EMS and the, and the Fire Department come up if they'd There goes the other half of the crowd, so. Thank you all for being here this evening. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important, out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. Whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-the-hospital medical care providers. Whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore I, Daniel A. Dunn, Mayor of the City of Temple, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Temple, Texas, and I urge all citizens to observe this week by showing their support for their local EMS providers and taking steps to improve their own personal safety, safety and preparedness. In testimony whereof, I witness my hand and the seal of the City of Temple, Texas, this the 18th day of May, 2017. And Chief, would you, would, would you say a few words about EMS service?
Thanks, Mayor, council. Just want to thank everybody for allowing us to do this for the city. These guys, both the firefighters and the EMS folks, do a great job for the citizens. Oftentimes, they don't realize what we're doing there. They'll, you know, folks will say, well, I called for an ambulance and a fire truck showed up. And we're that, that first line of defense, as they say, when you get sick or ill or injured. And we carry that care from that moment that you realize that you need it, all the way through to the hospital. And it's very important that these folks work together and are recognized for their efforts, because a lot of times, like I said, it goes unnoticed. And I had a lot bigger staff here, but they got called out on calls, and, which happens with us. There are no sacred days or sacred times. Many a lunch, and, or dinner, or breakfast, or other activities gotten interrupted so that we could go out and help someone. So, it's a true 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week job, and, you know, like I said, I'm very proud of the folks that we work with here, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'll give that to you, and, and just to everyone, to everyone here, thank you for all you do. We, we really appreciate it for, and, for taking care of our community the way that you always have. Good to see you, man. Item four is an election item. Consider adopting a resolution electing a mayor pro temp for the City of Temple, Texas, and I will entertain a motion on nominations for item four.
I nominate Councilmember Davis for the position of mayor pro temp.
A motion, do we have a second?
I would like to second that motion.
A motion, a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Seriously, I'd always vote for myself. No, I was just kidding. Congratulations. Thank you. Item five is a consent agenda. All items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, this is items 5A through 5O. Are there any items that you wish to remove for separate consideration or discussion? There being none, I will entertain a motion for item 5A through 5O.
Motion to approve items 5A through 5O.
Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Item six, a resolution. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing a construction contract with S.J. Lewis Construction of Texas, of San Antonio, for a lump sum price of $4,92,036.59 for construction of the Leon River Truck Trunk Sewer Phase 1. And I know that we had, this was removed from the consent agenda for voting purposes, and I will, unless there's any discussion, I will entertain a motion on item six.
Mayor, I'm excited to hear you. After item six is read.
Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Item seven, consider adopting a resolution supporting the Temple Housing Authority's down payment assistance program with a city contribution of $30,000, and authorizing execution of a memorandum of agreement with the Temple Housing Authority. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and tonight I'm going to go over with you some of the homeownership program that Temple Housing Authority currently offers and what they're requesting in funding. Historically, the, the program began in 1997, and they provide assistance to both Temple and Belton through the Central Texas Housing Consortium. However, the Temple Housing Authority provides down payment assistance to qualified home buyers at a level of $15,000. Part of this funding comes from the Housing Consortium, and then part of it comes from the city. This is in a form of a 10-year forgivable loan, and it is open to first-time home buyers, as well as those who have not owned a home in the past three years. It defrays the cost of upfront cost, and then it, it is open to individuals that have an 80% or below area median income, and then also, if they just have an 81%, 100% area median income, they can qualify for just the $5,000 from the city, to kind of help fill that gap. Some more program information, it is only open to Temple residents, the funding that the city provides, and then, over the history of the program, they have constructed about $300 million worth of housing, and, of which we, the city, has provided just over $1 million in assistance. On average, about $2,600 per home buyer. To, sorry, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs provides about a $2.2 million match for this program. That's where the additional funding comes from. And historically, and currently, they build in Heritage Village and then Highland Terrace. On average, the age of the recipient is about 35 years old. They, the average, historically, has been, for income, about $29,000, but more recently, it's about $40,000. And there, historically, the income for the family of four has been about $28,000, but now it's higher for $47,000 for their eligibility. The cost to build has, over the life of the program, has been about $78,000, but more recently, it's $115,000. So, the Temple Housing Authority is requesting $30,000. You might recall in December of 2016 that they requested $12,500. They've already exhausted those funds, so currently, they don't have any funding to help assist individuals and families who need the funding to help get into a home. So, if approved, the city will provide $30,000 as a lump sum, and it will assist six home buyers. They will use that within City, the City of Temple only, and they will have to provide quarterly reports summarizing who they distributed the funds to and how they used it, and they will also have to meet building codes and other TDAHCA requirements. Any questions?
Williams, council, any questions? There being no questions, I will entertain a motion on item seven.
I move to approve item seven.
Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye. Item eight, A, consider adopting a resolution authorizing a six-year agreement with American Medical Response Ambulance Service to provide emergency medical services commencing October 1st, 2017, and 8B, consider adopting a resolution authorizing an update to the maximum allowable billable ambulance rates to be charged for ambulance services provided within the City of Temple effective October 1st, 2017. Ms. Matty.
Thank you, Mayor Dunn. I'm pleased to present to you tonight a recommendation for providing emergency services for our city. Basically, the foundation for what I'm proposing tonight is founded in Chapter 5 of the City Ordinance, that basically states that all calls for emergency medical services within the city limits shall be directed to Bell County Communications, and all calls shall be responded to by Temple Fire and Rescue along with the city's contracted EMS provider. The city's contracted EMS provider for the last 20 years has been Scott &amp; White EMS. That contract will expire at the end of September of 2017. Per council's direction, in October 2016, at a workshop, staff initiated a request for proposal process to identify the city's contracted provider commencing on October 1st of 2017. The timeline associated with our solicitation process, on January 30th, we released an RFP. On February 8th, we held a pre-submital conference. The contractors that were attend, in attendance at that meeting were Acadian, American Medical Response, Care Flight, and Scott &amp; White EMS. On March 2nd, we opened the sealed proposals. The contractors that submitted a proposal on that date were Acadian Ambulance Service of Texas, Allegiance Mobile Health, and American Medical Response, also referred to as AMR. On March 2nd through April 7th, the proposals went into a committee for review and evaluation. There was representation on the committee from the Fire Department, the City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, Finance, and Bell County Communications. There was evaluation criteria defined within the RFP, that being 30% of the weight for their operational plan, 20% for their public sector experience, 15% for their leadership and strategy, 15% to their commitment to technology, 10% for their implementation and staffing plan, 5% for their fee structure, and also 5% for their financial soundness. On April 7th, the evaluation committee, after their initial review of all three proposals, narrowed the, two, three firms down to two, that being Acadian and AMR. On April 24th, the committee interviewed Acadian and AMR, and following those, those interviews, the committee unanimously is recommending AMR for award of the EMS contract based on the evaluation criteria that I just previously stated. Why AMR? They do have good public sector experience. Their corporate strategy right now is to stay focused on EMS in our area. They do not currently have an interest in providing non-emergency services. They're committed to a seamless, real-time technology plan, real important to have radios whereby the ambulances can communicate directly with Bell County Communications and Temple Fire and Rescue, along with a CAD system that interfaces with Bell County Communications so that they, along with Temple Fire and Rescue, can see exactly where all of the AMR ambulances are located. They're also committing to deploy five Type 3 ambulances. A Type 3 ambulance is very similar to the, to the little picture there in the left-hand corner of the screen. It's basically a box in the back that we feel, according to the EMS folks, offers the best service to the persons in need of medical attention, and also, they're proposing to brand those ambulances with basically stating Temple EMS on it. Just a, this is the first, this is what they included in their proposal, not exactly a final version of it. Also, AMR has very strong financial stability. They also desire to synchronize their medical protocols with the Temple Fire and Rescue's protocols, that will allow for a very smooth transition. They also have a very outstanding disaster response resources. They actually hold a FEMA contract. Within one hour, they can get 23 additional units to Temple if needed. Within two hours, 46 additional units, and within three hours, 86 additional units. The terms that we're proposing to council that, we're currently working with them to negotiate the actual terms, but the foundation for the terms is, staff is recommending an initial six-year term with the option for three, three-year renewals. That would be cumulatively, potentially, 15 years. Why, the 15 years are why the initial six, six years? There is an investment that's required by AMR to establish the service. It's staffing and establishment of the five ambulances, in addition to their desire to stage ambulances at facilities, not just on street corners. There also is, we look at it, in the industry, the frontline ambulance typically has a useful life of three years, so thus the reason for the terms to kind of be all divisible by three. In the contractual terms, there also will be 24/7 implementation and staffing of five ambulances. They will dispatch according to the terms, using the Bell County Communications CAD system, and also will allow just visibility in general, like I already stated, with Temple Fire and Rescue and Bell County, to see where their ambulances are located. They will also supply and maintain- They will also supply and maintain P-25 compliant radios in each ambulance, and they'll, the desire, or what we'll state as a contractual term, is to achieve an average response time of no more than nine minutes. That's not to say Temple Fire and Rescue currently has a response time, as the first responders, of about four to five minutes. So that concludes kind of the presentation for Agenda Item 8A, but a supplemental item is 8B. AMR is requesting an adjustment to the city's maximum allowable ambulance rates. What they're requesting is an increase to the advanced life support rates from $900 to $1,025, and they're also recommending a decrease for a treatment, no transport, from $150 down to zero. Per the Code into Ordinance, Chapter 5, again, the Council reserves the right to regulate and fix the maximum rates for ambulance services within the city. So stated below is just kind of a summary of what the current city rates are, along with the proposed rates, with the highlighted, the ones that they're proposing, or we, as staff, are supporting changing. Why the rate adjustments? Temple EMS is a non-subsidy system. We do not support the ambulance service with tax dollars. So basically, to cover all of AMR's costs, they've determined that they need that increase in order to make themselves sustaining and basically ready to provide EMS services. The primary pairs of the services, there's Medicare. They're not going to get 100% of the value of what's billed to Medicare. It's all regulated. Medicaid, again, they have usual and customary fees for them that they'll only get to get paid. There's no additional revenue that they'll get from the user of the service in that case. Commercial insurance, they typically have their usual and customary rates also, and private FAY is a significantly low collection level. They're only asking for an increase for advanced life support rates. ALS, patients consume basically substantially most of the resources when it comes to ambulance I want to highlight that what we have in front of you this evening is not any change to the non-emergency services. We currently have three franchises that are awarded for non-emergency services. Baylor Scott &amp; White has a franchise that goes through September 2018. Acadian has a franchise that goes through also September 18, and Ameristat has a franchise that goes through November of 2019. So on your council agenda this evening, again, there's a Part A and a Part B. Part A is a recommendation to award a six-year agreement with American Medical Response to provide emergency medical services commencing on October 1st, 2017. And Part B of this item is a recommendation to revise the maximum allowable ambulance rates. Again, this would be effective October 1st, 2017. Be happy to answer any questions that we have. There are four representatives here this evening from AMR. They're led by Robert Saunders, along with Stephen Droulier in the audience this evening.
Matty, Council. Any questions?
I have one. If the UCR rate is already established, and they're getting paid a percentage off of that, you know, Medicaid, Medicare, commercial insurance, then why even note an increase from 900 to 1,125? If the rate's already established?
Well, it varies through all the different payers, is my understanding. Steve or Robert?
Basically, an increase in UCR, is that, for lack of a better way to say it, to give them the ability to mark the price up so that UCR is a higher number?
I'd really like, if you don't mind, if I ask Mr. Droulier to come up and kind of give an explanation of that. I know that he's well qualified to do that, more so than I am.
He'll just step up to the podium. If you don't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Steve Droulier, 13315 Serenity Lane, San Antonio, Texas. I'm the VP of Operations for AMR in Texas. The first challenge is that healthcare reimbursement is obviously extraordinarily complicated. The UCR that we talked about being set for Medicare and Medicaid, no rate changes that we make will impact what those are on any given basis. Those are set, and actually, the individual citizen who has Medicare or Medicaid would not see a change in what they pay because even what, under Medicare, where they're responsible for 20% of what Medicare pay, authorizes, our rates don't change what Medicare authorizes. So that 20% is the same as they're paying today, as it'll be tomorrow if this rate increase is approved. Where the benefit from a UCR rate change comes in is things like auto insurance on motor vehicle accidents will pay UCR. Some commercial insurances will pay UCR. Our UCR, they'll pay what we bill, or a percentage of what we bill. So it does give us the ability to increase some level of collection. It's usually somewhere in the neighborhood of about $20 per $100, not, actually, it's about $8 per $100 of increase that we get per transport. Also, there is, and I don't know that this has been proved out, there's a long-term strategy of saying that federal payers look at what the UCRs are as a way of determining, do they need to increase how much they'll pay over time? But for the majority of EMS patients, they won't see the change. It's for those smaller subsets of commercial insurance and automobile insurance that'll pay that higher UCR.
No more questions? Thank you, sir. There are no more questions, I will entertain a motion on Item 8A and B, and we can take those together.
Mayor, make a motion that we take A and B together for approval as written and as presented.
Second.
Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item 9, consider adopting a resolution authorizing a final deductive change order to the Tarver Drive Extension Construction Contract with RT Schneider Construction Company of Belton in the amount of $32,272.50 for construction services required for street, drainage, and water utility extensions. And again, this was pulled for voting purposes, and if there is no discussion, I will entertain a motion on Item 9.
Motion to approve Item 9.
Second.
A motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Item 10, a resolution with a public hearing. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for funding through the Texas Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program in the amount of $2,075,002, with $1,660,002 reimbursed to the city through federal funding to develop urban sidewalks and improvements along South 31st Street between Adams Avenue and Blue Meadow Drive. Ms. Williams.
Hi.
Hi.
So, in front of you, you have an item to, in a public hearing, to discuss this application that we, staff is recommending for this alternative, transportation alternative program. It was released by Techstat on January 27, and it focuses on alternative modes of transportation, facilitating those within our streets. About $52 million is estimated for population areas of under 200,000. Per the program, the project should strongly encourage the following: they should enhance bicycle and pedestrian safety for people of all ages and abilities, improve safety, access, or mobility for individuals with disabilities, construct on-system improvements to improve Techstat's ADA pedestrian initiatives, provide access to or between existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities, public transportation or mobility options, connect important community destinations, contribute to the development of a statewide or regional bicycle route for tourism, and are contribute as an independent element to a larger public project investment. And staff feels that the project we are proposing addresses the majority of these. So the proposed projects is basically to fill in the gaps along South 31st Street. The blue area is existing sidewalks. The green area here between Canyon Creek and Marlinwood is a $500,000 project that is being funded through Techstat, another grant that we've received. And then the red areas are kind of the gaps that haven't been filled in through development or other grants or other projects that have happened. This would provide nearly a four-and-a-half-mile contiguous sidewalk along South 31st Street. We are in the process of completing a project on North 31st Street that connects to Temple High School. And then, we have also been awarded nearly $1.9 million along Adams and Central to Do Sidewalks, too. So we're completing a lot of the spines, sidewalk spines throughout this community if we are awarded this project. The current conditions, we currently have unsafe conditions where pedestrians are walking and/or using motorized scooters along the street, which slows traffic and just causes numerous buildup of problems. We have a lot of crosswalks that just lead to nowhere, and so a pedestrian might be able to cross the street, but then they don't have anywhere to actually walk along the side of the road. We also have a lot of new development, which is addressing a lot of the open, missing sidewalk areas now, and so we need a way to connect those residential areas to these new commercial areas. And currently, pedestrians are just creating their own paths, so they're just walking wherever they can, and there's still just random small gaps between development that aren't addressed, like six-foot gaps that just need to be filled in. So this would provide six-foot wide sidewalks in most areas, at least on one side of the street. Overall, enhanced aesthetics. It would increase connection, accessibility, and safety overall, and it would impact about 8,600 households. Like I said before, about four-and-a-half-mile contiguous sidewalks would be provided. And then it would also provide a pedestrian bridge over the railroad on 31st Street, which would highly increase safety. The project cost is just over $2 million. We would request reimbursement of about $1.6 million from Techstat. The city match would be a total of $415,000. With that, $275,000 would be in-kind contribution through design and engineering that is needed to complete the project, and a cash match would be $140,000. Today, we are holding the public hearing. Per the grant requirements, we are supposed to hold a public hearing, so that is meeting that requirement. It is due May 22, and they will be reviewed from May to August, and project selection should be announced in the fall of 2017. Any questions?
Questions, Council? Thank you, Ms. Williams. This time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
James Steen, Setmore, 402 South, 26th Street. Thank y'all. About a year, maybe two years ago, I came up with some pictures, and the third picture down that y'all showed on 31st and Avenue H, yes and no, right there, remember that little sign? You can kind of see it now in the background there. Had to y'all cut that. I remember at that time, a request to see if y'all could put a sidewalk through there. Well, thank y'all for getting a sidewalk through there. Really do. I really appreciate the work the city's really doing.
Thank you, Mr. Setner. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the only reading of Item 10.
I move to approve Item 10.
Second.
Motion to second, Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Actually, we'll keep our fingers crossed, so that'd be great. Item 11, a first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning for 1, 2.497 acres from Agricultural District to General Retail District. 2, 67.455 acres from PD MF1 MF2 and Agricultural Districts to Single Family 3 District. And 3, a 6.606 acre from PD MF1 District to Single Family, I guess, Single Family Attached 3 for a total rezoning of 76.558 acres situated in the Maximo Moreno survey, abstract number 14, Bell County, Texas, generally located east of South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and generally south and west of Case Road. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor Dunn, City Council. Just to orient you with the project location, again, this is bordered by South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to the west, Highway 36 approximately on the south, Case Road immediately surrounding on two of those sides, and then the Loop 363 on the east. And to the right, we have an aerial photograph showing the project more zoomed in with those same border areas, and then the railroad immediately onto the east as well. And just kind of a breakdown, the request itself is for 2.4 acres of retail, 67 acres of single-family detached homes, and 6.6 acres for townhomes. The request may include a potential future expansion, which would include an abandonment of a portion of Case Road and potentially the acquisition of a 3.3-acre city-owned property, which is shown by the triangular piece here. To date, staff has not received application for both of those, but as far as staff knows, we haven't been directed differently, that those haven't been disincluded or not included, and still could potentially come in at some time in the future. Now, in terms of the current zoning, Ordinance 952314 was for a planned development for PD MF1, which was specifically for a retirement center for elderly and disabled persons on 12.5 acres. That was the only permitted use within that PD and was never built. And so in order for townhomes to be developed, the SFA 3 is being desired. And I'll show you later a reference to it. Normally, with the base zoning in the MF1, townhomes are permitted, but because the retirement center was the only specified use, the rezoning is necessary for the PD MF1 portion. The remaining portion of the PD MF1, the MF2 and the ag-zoned, is also desired for the single-family 3 detached homes and the general retail, which I have a breakdown showing, again, with the yellow labels. The single-family would be on approximately 67 acres. The townhomes would be on 6.6 acres, and the general retail in this lower right-hand In terms of the future land use map, the request is not completely compliant, the reason being the auto-urban multifamily shown with the brown coloring is intended for multifamily development. It does support the SFA 3, but it does not support the SF 3. The auto-urban, which is shown by the red, is intended for commercial. It supports the general retail, but it would not support the single-family. So we have partial compliance. Both water and sewer are available through numerous existing facilities to serve the property as it develops. In terms of the thoroughfare plan and the trails, South Martin Luther King Drive is a minor arterial. There's no anticipated improvement funded or scheduled through the TCIP program. Case Road is a collector. As we review any future plat, any needed right-of-way would be addressed during the plat stage, and it's the DRC or Development Review Stage. Sidewalks would also, for South Martin Luther King Drive, as well as Case Road, would be addressed at that time. And no trails were identified bordering the project. Just some photographs of the project site, more of a street level of Case Road on top, and then a panorama showing about 80% to 90% of the project site. I was able to get a picture from the overpass, which kind of shows the area almost in its entirety. And the city-owned tract that I had talked about initially as being a potential expansion is shown in the foreground. To the north are the existing Village at Meadow Bend and the Meadows at Creekside, both front on Case Road. To the south is State Highway 36, and there's scattered retail service that's already in To the west is existing retail and service uses along Country Lane. And to the east, along Case Road, again, the city-owned tract and the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Line. There's a lot of information on this table, and the main takeaway for the resident- There's a lot of information on this table and the main takeaway for the residential. Again, the planned development only called for the retirement center as the only specified use, and so the rezoning is necessary in order to accommodate the townhomes. And the GR would be base zoning. There's no restrictive uses being restricted or added, so these are standard uses, both permitted and conditional use indicated by the CUP. And again, since there's a lot of zoning that is currently existing as well as proposed, the main takeaway from this is that with the single-family, the SF 3 that's being proposed, the applicant is proposing a larger lot size and a larger individual lot than what the base zoning of the SF 3 has. Again, the lots would be proposed at approximately 6,000 square foot. And again, these would be standard non-residential zoning or development standards for the general retail. The rear setback indicated by the asterisk at 10 feet is triggered by any kind of buffering or screening that would be in place, that a non-residential use is adjacent to a residential use. And again, the buffering and screening would be in the form of five-gallon plants that are planted at a height of six feet on 36-inch center, or a fence that in a height between six feet and eight feet, made of wood, masonry, or stone, or a precast material, concrete material. Twenty-three notices were sent out as part of the rezoning process. Three notices were returned in agreement. No notices were returned in disagreement, and one notice was returned with no response. In terms of the compliance, the only category was the future land use map, and that's what the partial compliance with the two designations. Staff is recommending approval of the request from the PD MF1 MF2 and ag districts to the SF 3, SFA 3, and the GR districts. At the April 17 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6 to 0 to approve the rezoning per staff's recommendation. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available should you have any questions, and the applicant, John Keela, is also in the audience should you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Council, any questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing on item 11. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Council, your pleasure on the first reading of item 11.
May I move to approve item 2017-4843 as presented?
Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. Item 12, a first reading in a public hearing. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning and site development plan from agricultural, light industrial, single-family 3, and office 2 zoning districts to planned development general retail with a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption, where the sale of alcohol may be 75 percent or more of the total revenue in planned development single-family 3 on 185.634 acres of outblocks 2075-A, 2050-D, 2050-A, 2068-A, 2067-A, 2074-A situated in the Baldwin Robertson survey, abstract number 17, Bell County, Texas, located at the Westfield Boulevard and State Highway 36. Ms. Barrett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the final planning and zoning case this evening, there is another master plan modeled similarly to one that you're probably familiar with from several years ago, Westfield and by the same developer. It is for first reading tonight, and of course, we'll come back on June 1st. A little background, this is a large site. It encompasses approximately 185 acres, bordered on the north by Airport Road and on the south by Prairie View, on the west by North P Ridge, and it encompasses Westfield Boulevard as well. There are multiple tracts that make up this property. They are zoned ag, SF 3, office 2, and light industrial. The applicant is proposing the master plan, and it will have a mixture of zonings and uses similar to Westfield. He's also requesting for the PD GR, for the planned development GR portion, some of those areas with an alcohol CUP. It is, as I said, modeled after Westfield, which is to the south, and here in this map, you can see where it lies in relation to the other properties, the airport, of course, is shown to the north, and the existing new subdivision, North Gate, is not a part of this planned development, but it does abut it, is basically considered part of the same overall development. There are a couple of elements that are of note. Westfield Boulevard is proposed to be extended from its current ending point through to Airport Road as a portion, a part of this planned development, and a proposed collector is also part of the development layout as well. Current area zoning is somewhat complicated and colorful. The light purple is the light industrial district and is the majority of the site, actually. There is some single-family 2 as a part of it, some office 2, and some ag as well, which was the base zoning for much of the area that's undeveloped in this part of the city. The future land use map shows the entire portion as agricultural rural, and what I've done is I've indicated on the future land use map that portion with pink and the various patterns is the proposed portion of the site that the applicant is wishing to have as the general retail portion. The rest of the site that's barred would be the single-family residential, and also encompasses some parks and drainage areas as well. It is therefore non-compliant with the future land use map, simply by virtue of the fact that it isn't a proposed agricultural rural use. However, the surrounding areas, if you'll see, are designated as suburban commercial, which the GR would fall into, and suburban residential, as well as the public institutional portion of the airport. Water and sewer are nearby and available to the property, so this is in compliance. The thoroughfare and trails map for the area shows Westfield Boulevard extending through the property. Prairie View Road at the south is on the TCIP with the North P Ridge Road to the west, and the proposed collector that I mentioned previously does go through the property and would be a part of the development. This is the planned development site plan. It is somewhat complicated, so I'll spend a little bit of time on it. The pink areas are the general retail portions. The ones that are plain pink with no cross-hatchings here and here are a mixed use for having a variety of uses. The cross-hatches would be the portion that the applicant is asking for, the alcohol CUP in addition to the mixed uses, and the light yellow is the single-family residential development. The blue areas are those drainage tract portions, and the green is the park areas that he is proposing. He is asking for vertical mixed use in the PD, which would allow multifamily, and in addition, he's asking for reduced corner setbacks in the residential portion of the SF 3 from our required 15 feet to 10 feet. To summarize, the PD GR would be all uses that are identified in code for GR to be allowed. The vertical mixed use would allow for multifamily and retail to be existing side-by-side, and multifamily 3 would be allowed with the conditional use permit, as I spoke of earlier, for on-premise alcohol consumption on that portion that was shown in the pink hatched. Buffers between non-residential and residential uses would be waived in the PD because of the mixture of the uses, and for the PD SF 3 portion, the side corner setbacks would be reduced to 10 feet. Here are some site photos. On the left is the view, if you're standing on the corner, Prairie View and Westfield Boulevard and are looking east. The right-hand photograph is standing at the same corner and looking north along Westfield Boulevard from Prairie View. As you can see, this is into the interior portion of the site. The view to the south on the same corner is looking at Prairie View and Westfield Boulevard at the intersection, and then standing on the identical corner and looking to the west, you see the North Gate subdivision that's currently being constructed along with Prairie View as it goes to the west. On the North P Ridge side of the property, if you look to the east, it is undeveloped property, and if you stand and look south, you see along North P Ridge Road some residential and agricultural uses. The view to the north shows North P Ridge Road, which is a fairly narrow roadway at that portion, and across the street, looking west, are a few scattered homes. On the Airport Road side of the property, if you are looking into the property, you can see I have outlined where the North Gate is visible to the south. There is pasture land between Airport Road and that subdivision. If you look north from that same spot, you will see the airport. Looking west along Airport Road, you can see the farmland, agricultural character of the road and the airport across the road. And to the south, the bottom photo is looking to the east along Airport Road. There were 102 notices mailed primarily because of so many lots having already been platted in the North Gate portion to the south. Seventy-one were received in agreement. Thirty-nine of those were from the applicant. I did receive one in disagreement from a resident along North P Ridge Road, and none were undelivered. The newspaper did publish the notice on April 6 in accordance with state law. As a reminder, the Unified Development Code defines a PD or planned development to be a flexible overlay zoning district, which is designed to respond to unique development proposals, special design considerations, and land use transitions that allow evaluation of land use relationships to the surrounding areas through the development plan approval, which was that site plan that I showed you that had the pink on it. And per our UDC code, a planned development does require approval of the site plan that is binding. Here is that site plan without all of the confusing labels that might have cluttered it up a little bit. It is flipped a little bit so that, in order to fit on the page, so the Airport Road is here to the right, would actually be to the north, would be at the top level. Prairie View is here on the left-hand side, and then the proposed collector that I spoke of earlier is a portion of the subdivision roadway that extends from Westfield Boulevard to the edge of the property to North P Ridge and actually crosses Westfield and is a part of the interior lots of the subdivision. Additionally, staff identified the airport proximity to the proposed residential area at approximately 2,400 feet from the residential portion of this development to the airport At the April 17 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they voted 6 to 0 to approve the planned development and site plan for the North Gate master plan with four of five conditions from staff's recommendations, and they are as follows: that alcohol CUPs be allowed along Airport Road as part of the PD general retail conditions, that multifamily and vertical mixed uses be allowed, and that buffers be waived between residential and non-residential uses. For the PD SF 3 conditions, that would be the single-family residential, that the minimum side corner yard setback that code requires be allowed to be 10 feet. Staff had recommended an additional condition that prospective new owners of residential lots be informed through their deed restrictions of the location of the airport and its proximity. That was not approved by planning and zoning. Staff recommends approval of the North Gate master plan to rezone the subject property into the planned development districts, PD SF 3 and PD GR, with the accompanying request for alcohol CUPs, subject to your approval of a variance to come for the distance from residential and park distance requirements. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Council, any questions?
I do have a question. Lynn, could you go back, I think, two slides, the one where you stopped? The staff recommended condition that was not approved by PNC, would you explain that slightly, just a little?
It was brought to our attention that the airport was quite close to the large subdivision, and one of the issues that sometimes comes up from an airport management standpoint is problems with new homeowners, and so it was brought to our attention, and we did add that as a recommendation. However, planning and zoning did not feel that it was necessary, so these are the four recommended PD conditions, and staff is quite fine with those, yes.
Developer was accepting of five, the fifth point?
No, ma'am. I believe he supported the four.
Councilmember Long, if I could say this, my concern with leaving number five in is that more people would be more than likely to know that the airport is across the road from them, but I'm afraid that if, by putting those in the deed restrictions, it might stigmatize, it might somehow stigmatize the property for selling and reselling purposes.
Well, I thank you for expressing that, because that's kind of what I was wondering and didn't know how to express it, so, thank you.
What does that mean in the need for any developmental or use to comply with FAA What does that mean?
Yeah, if you don't mind, then, yeah, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm John Keela, Level 11122 White Rock Drive. On this particular issue, we already knew that we were in compliance with the FAA's authority. all the regulations. I was on the master planning committees for the last two master plans for the airport, had talked to Sharon on this issue. She was concerned, is there something we should tell everybody? There's an airport there, and the deed restriction is not the right place to do it. So, two points. We are not in any of the critical zones at all in the airport, so this development won't hamper any of the airport operations. Two, there's an airport across the street, and we hope people will see that. There's two big signs, and the deed restrictions is not the place, Mayor. That is correct. That's just a bad place to do it. Sharon was okay with it, you're director of airport, and I'd asked for it to take it out, because I really thought it was going to be cumbersome to try and figure out, how do you do that? So, I was happy that they concurred. It was really a last-minute item, so we, literally, I think Sharon had told staff the day of the P&amp;Z meeting, so it got put in at the last minute, but we did talk to Sharon, and she's comfortable with the fact that two roads will come out and big signs of the city airport. Can we go to site plan very quickly? There is a point I would love to just make that, see where it says proposed collector, and got the two lines. That site has been bought by the city, or the BISD for an elementary. Really is something I should have highlighted on here. That whole 20-acre tract there is a BISD elementary site, and the collector, we are fast-tracking this, the North Gate subdivision is, they're selling very quickly. Across P Ridge from this is where your Lake Point is. Probably close to 375 permits a year are coming out of this corridor right now versus your south 2305, anything south, probably 10 or 15 permits. So, if you're looking at your permits, this is in your 400s. I have encouraged, I know it's our development, and our development is coming around this school, and they've owned that site, but I had encouraged the school to look at this site for their elementary, mainly for safety purposes for the city and the ease. Every time they did meet, they were, the engineers and architects were informed that this site does not have water and sewer. Just so you all know, the Westfield Boulevard connection from the current subdivision out to the airport, your plans are at 95%. You've paid for them, they're completed. You own all of the right-of-way. That collector street will be sitting there in 12 to 18 months. I do that just as a courtesy, I have talked to the Assistant City Manager, Acting City Manager, and said that, because every time I call the school system, they are informed that really they should stick to their poison oak site because they can get all of the utilities, and this site won't have them. Just as a point of order, that's probably a $2.5 million street that you could release and start construction in the next, as fastly as you could put it on the books, and that my collector will be there, so they will have water, sewer, a collector street, and an arterial all around that in 12 months. It might be worthwhile to make them aware that. I consistently try to tell them, and they get a different story. Just a point of order. You know, these citizens will be just as happy going to either Lake Point, which is a brand-new school, or High Point, or Tarver. Both of them are brand-new schools. The biggest burden will be on us trying to build a road that they're going to have a school in.
Probably getting a little off of, probably got a little off of the.
Yep, I always do. I like you.
I know.
That's me, as you know. I have a tendency to do that, but it seemed as good a time to make that point here as any, so.
Noted.
Because we will be talking about that with the plat. Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks so much.
Mayor, is the collector he's referring to, the collector we talked about? Okay, got it.
If I can just circle back one more time on the airport issue. If you've lived in Temple for 30 minutes, you know where the airport is typically. But I know that Georgetown, they experienced a lot of issues with their airport. As the city built up around their airport, the more people that were there, all of a sudden, didn't like the noise from the planes. So, I don't know if, and of course, we get a lot of military action out there, too, with helicopters coming over from Fort Hood. So, I don't know if that needs to be addressed more formally, but, you know, that's one of the reasons why we have the airshow, we used to have the airshow here in Temple, was because Georgetown, the residents around the airport had issues with that. So, looking way in the future, I just think that's something that, if it's going to be a problem, we need to address it sooner rather than later.
I almost, well, actually, before we do that, I'll just ask if anyone else would like to speak during the public hearing? All right, if not, I will declare the public hearing closed. To your point, I think that, I think that that has merit, but the fact that we do have, there is a lot of signage. It is on a major, it is on a state highway, the fact that we have a very large water tower with an airplane on it. I think that those are all, I mean, I understand exactly where you're coming from. My fear would be that the, and again, to use the word stigmatism, I think there might, there might be a stigma attached in the deed restrictions every time somebody tries to buy one of those houses, and that comes up, you know, that comes up on a title commitment or in the deed restrictions. I'm afraid that it would, I'm afraid that it would hurt, hurt that subdivision in the future more than it would, more than it would help it.
I don't disagree with that. I just, just knowing what Georgetown's gone through, I don't know if, I'll leave it alone.
Mayor, just.
District One, comments are noted.
I'm slightly confused. Are you, are you in essence saying, remove that fifth?
I'm saying, leave it like the P&amp;Z has it with the removal of item five on the staff suggestion.
All right. All right. I understand. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, I'll, go ahead.
I'm going to comment, husband.
Oh, okay. If not, I will entertain a motion on item 12.
I want to make a motion. I first want to say how much I appreciate the vision and, quite honestly, just the hard work that goes into master planning a big area like this that makes for good, sustainable growth, and if everywhere did that, our city will continue to grow in a good way. Therefore, I move to approve item 12, as passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That's with removal of item five.
Correct.
Got it.
Motion?
Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. Item 13, under board appointments, consider adopting a resolution appointing one regular member and one alternate member to the Bell County Public Health District Board of Directors. We do have, we do have someone that I would like to nominate, but we do not have an alternate as of yet, hopefully by the next meeting, but I would like to nominate Dr. Andre Avatz to serve on the Bell County Public Health District Board of Directors, and I would entertain a motion on item 13.
Mayor, I move that item 13 be approved as you stated.
Second.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye. Item 14, consider adopting a resolution appointing members to the following city boards and commissions. And I will, I will read this in as we visited about upstairs. On 14A, the Building Board of Appeals, four members to fill expired terms through 2019, four members to fill expired terms through 2020, two members to fill expired terms through 2021. We have, we have those being appoint Casey Simpson from Encore, reappoint Kramer Myers, a master electrician, Robert Bass, master electrician, Kenneth Molina, a journeyman electrician, to fill expired terms through 2019, and reappoint Larry Neal, architect, Michael Vansa from HVAC, Bonnie Clark from engineer, engineering, and appoint Emilio Peralas as a builder to fill expired terms through 2020, and appoint Richard Hernandez, master plumber, and JW Hitt as a master plumber to fill expired terms through 2021. B, the Parks and Leisure Services Advisory Board, one member to fill an unexpired term through March 1st, 2018. Would like to nominate Joey Agee to fill an unexpired term through March 1st, 2018. And item C, would like to nominate Tim Davis to fulfill the one council member standing on the Temple Economic Development Commission, and if that is to everyone's liking, I would entertain a motion on item 14.
Mayor, can we remove item C for voting purposes from the block?
Sure.
From A and B.
I can do that. Are you trying to tell us something?
From that perspective, Mayor, I will make a motion that we accept A and B as read by you.
Okay, and then we'll leave out item C for the moment.
Right.
Second.
Got motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye, and I will entertain a motion on item 14C.
I move to nominate Councilmember Davis to fill the unexpired, or the term for the Temple Economic Development Corporation.
I second that movement.
Motion to second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Absaying.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Mayor Dunn.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance this evening. Have a good evening.
Good. An hour and a half, that was a lot.
I told Shannon, she said I need to be out about 6:30.
She has placed.